Oh, my cell phone.
You can?
Yeah.
Two thousand four S. For our four S.
You count of a portion buff?
That's my third one, but they've been spread out over twenty years apart each time.
Okay. You always return.
These cars, you still got your little Honda S two hundred or?
Yes, two thousand.
Yes, two thousand. There's this website called Bring a Trailer. It's a car auction site.
I think that's ours. Yes, two thousand. Yeah, my body's a little nicked up, but I look it up on the. And I don't like to take down the highway at all. First meeting.
Yeah. Well said. Okay. Okay, I'd like to call the Thursday, February seventh meeting of the Capitola Planning Commission to order. We have a roll, please.
Commissar, Commissioner Christensen.
Here.
Commissioner Newman.
Here.
Commissioner Ruth.
Here.
Commissioner Welch.
Here.
And Commissioner Wilk.
Here.
Our first item of business is the swearing in of the new planning commissioners. Katie?
So I'll be doing that.
Okay.
Courtney, do you want to come first? We'll do it in alphabetical order.
I, Courtney Christensen. Do solemnly swear. That I will support and defend. The Constitution. Of the United States. And the Constitution. Of the State of California. Against all enemies. Foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith and allegiance. To the Constitution. Of the United States. And the Constitution. Of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely. Without any re- mental reservation. Or purpose of evasion. And I will well and faithfully. Discharge the duties. Upon which I am about to enter. Thanks. So you'll just sign now. With any pen, it's fine. And then, Mr. Ruth.
I, Michael Ruth. Do solemnly swear. That I will support and defend. The Constitution. Of the United States. And the Constitution. Of the State of California. Against all enemies. Foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith and allegiance. To the Constitution. Of the United States. And the Constitution. Of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely. Without any mental reservations. Or purpose of evasion. And that I will well and faithfully. Discharge the duties. Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations. Thank you.
I, Peter Wilk. Do solemnly swear. That I will support and defend. The Constitution. Of the United States. And the Constitution. Of the State of California. Against all enemies. Foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith and allegiance. To the Constitution. Of the United States. And the Constitution. Of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely. Without any mental reservation. Or purpose of evasion. And that I will well and faithfully. Discharge the duties. Upon which I am about to enter. Thank you.
Thank you.
But we did. We'll do it now.
Yeah, let's do it.
Okay, and now will everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, our first item of business tonight is the selection of the chair and vice chair. Are there any nominations?
I'd like to nominate TJ Welch as chair.
Second.
Hey, Reverend. Motion is second. Are there any other nominations?
I would like to nominate Ed Newman as vice chair.
Second.
Oh, you're talking about for the same one. We should finish this for first.
Yeah, let's do this one first, okay. All right, so there are no other nominations. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Commissioner Christensen. Commissioner Newman.
Yes.
Commissioner Ruth.
Yes.
Commissioner Welch. Commissioner Wilk.
Yes.
TJ?
All right, thank you. Well, I guess now we move on to the vice chair, and as the chairperson, I cannot make a nomination, so.
I'd like to nominate Ed Newman as vice chair.
A second?
So we have a first, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So it looks like passes. Thank you. Okay, so our next point of business here is to appoint someone to the Art and Cultural Commission, and this is always fun. Do we have someone that's interested in?
I'd be interested.
Oh, we have two?
By all means.
Okay, so.
I withdraw my interest.
Peter's gonna withdraw. Okay, so we have someone that is interested now. Courtney, do we have a motion to appoint her to the commission?
So moved.
All right, we have first.
Second.
I'm sorry, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations. You're gonna have a good time in there. They're doing some fun stuff in the city, so. That's excellent. Next on the item is, oh, you know, and there should be one more thing. I don't have it to read in front of me, but I know this can be viewed. This meeting is cable cast live on Charter Communications, cable TV channel eight and AT&amp;T U-verse channel ninety-nine. And that is not true. It's not being displayed on the AT&amp;T right now. Something we need to work on. It is being recorded to be replayed on the following Monday and Friday at one P. M. on Charter Channel seventy-one and Comcast Channel twenty-five. Meetings can also be viewed from the city's website at www.cityofcapitola.org. Our technician tonight is Lynn Dutton. As a reminder, please turn off your cell phones during the meeting, and if you do come up to the podium there, we ask that you sign the name, so we have that for our records. Okay. So next is our oral communications. First, do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda?
There were a few last minute additional materials that were at your desk this evening regarding item six A, and for anyone that is here for that item, we also had some available at the back of the room. Including a site plan that was submitted by the applicant showing the sidewalks and additional information regarding parking in the village from staff.
Okay, and I think those are in front of all of you, so we have those. Thank you. Next on the agenda is public comments. This opportunity is for those of you who like to get up and present something to us on an item that is not on tonight's agenda. So if you have something you'd like to come and talk to the commission about on an item not on tonight's agenda, we'll give you a few minutes. And it doesn't look like we have any takers, so we'll bring it back, and it's time for commission comments.
Just like to welcome all the new commissioners.
And old commissioners.
And old commissioners coming back.
Welcome. Yes, this will be a good time. Thank you. Staff comments?
I have one comment this evening. There was, have been several questions of why I think, why items go on the consent calendar and others on the regular, so I just wanted to clarify that when staff receives a project that complies with the zoning ordinance, we place it on the consent agenda, and we leave it up to the planning commission to pull it off. So, and when applicants come in, we explain that to them as well. But, so the items that are on consent always comply with, they're not asking for a variance or any, have any special circumstances tied to them. So just for a point of clarification of our process.
Did you have something, Mia? Oh, there we have it. Thank you. Now our next item, we're on item four A. This is approval of our minutes from our last regular meeting, which was December sixth, and on that date, the only two commissioners were Ed and myself there. So I think we have a clarification from, I guess Reed, our attorney, city attorney, that we'll take, go ahead and make a motion, and I guess I'd be able to see how we approve it, and the other three new members would abstain since you were not at that meeting. So do I have a motion?
I will move approval in the minutes.
And I guess I will second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? And.
Abstain.
Abstain from the other three. So I guess that will work for, at least the legal part. This next item is the consent calendar, and as Katie mentioned, these items are passed in one vote, and we give an opportunity for one of our commissioners or someone from the public that would like to pull one of these items, and there's three items. Two ten Esplanade, seventeen thirty Forty Second Avenue, six oh seven Oak Drive, that are on tonight's consent calendar. So if you would like to pull that off or have a discussion about it, this is a time that we would ask that. Any commissioners?
Just a point of clarification that Commissioner Christensen will have to recuse herself from item two ten Esplanade, so we would suggest taking a separate vote on that. You don't have to leave the room if it doesn't get pulled off consent.
Good, very good. Is there anybody that would like to pull an item before discussion? Anybody from the audience? Okay, so it looks like we're going to have two votes. One would be for item A on the consent calendar. So do I have a motion to approve item A?
So moved.
Peter, in a second?
Second.
All right, so we have first, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So that passes unanimous. Next would be item B and C. Do we have a motion to approve those on the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second.
So we have a first, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? So there we pass. Our last item here on our public hearings, we're gonna move on to item A. This item is at two eleven Monterey Avenue. It's a conceptual review for a proposed design permit to demolish an existing duplex and build a three-story thirty-seven hundred and twenty square foot duplex with a variance on the site, with onsite parking and open space requirement located within the central village zoning district. So we'll start off with a staff report.
Okay. Good evening, commissioners. Chairperson Welch. The applicant is requesting a conceptual review of a proposed design permit to build a new three-story duplex in the central village zoning district. The applicant is also requesting a variance to the onsite parking and open space requirements. The existing duplex at two eleven Monterey Avenue is approximately one thousand four hundred and nineteen square feet. The applicant is proposing a new three-story three thousand seven hundred and twenty square foot duplex. The property is surrounded by mixed-use and commercial lots in Capitola Village. The exterior design of the proposed duplex features stucco throughout. The roof, when viewed from Monterey Avenue, is flat, while the roof above unit B on the rear of the building is a standing ridge metal roof. The design includes two decks on the second and third stories and a three-car garage which opens onto Monterey Avenue. Both units are accessed on the south side of the structure. The entryway is set back twenty-eight feet from the front facade of the building. The intent of the conceptual review process is to provide the applicant with early feedback on complex projects. Staff suggests the commission focus their comment and direction on the overall project concept and design. As a starting point, four issues have been identified which the commission may wish to consider. The proposed design includes a sidewalk curb cut to allow for garage access and a second-story deck which would extend over the sidewalk. There is one single-family residence with a curb cut. The other curb cuts shown here all lead to public or private parking lots. The curb cuts have historically been discouraged in this area due to impacts on traffic, circulation, and the increase in potential accidents. Additionally, the proposed curb cut would result in the loss of one public parking space. The zoning code requires parking for new uses in the village to be provided on sites outside the village. There is an exception for nonhistoric structures and residential areas bounding the central commercial district of the village. However, the description of residential areas bounding the central commercial district has been unclear. Staff identified the same description within the coastal land use plan at a reference to a map identifying the residential boundary. This slide is the Village Residential Overlay Zones map, which was adopted by the City of Capitola in nineteen eighty-seven and is still part of the City of Capitola's land use plan. The map states that residential areas one, three, and four are the only areas that are permitted to have onsite parking. The map also shows that two eleven Monterey Avenue is not located in one of the three residential areas that are permitted to have onsite parking. The property at two eleven Monterey Avenue is located in a flood zone, which means if the existing residential is removed from the first story, the new structure could not have residential on the first story. These homes in the Riverview Avenue neighborhood provide an example of what homes built to FEMA floodplain standards look like with a garage on the bottom and living areas above. The addition of homes built to floodplain standards with garages on the first story will impact the aesthetics of the pedestrian experience in the village. The existing pedestrian-friendly design of the village is defined by the pattern of buildings built with little or no setbacks right up to the sidewalk, picture windows, and articulation in the buildings. The proposed front facade along the sidewalk does not include an entryway, windows, or articulation, and the front door is, oops, oh, hold on. Oh, sorry. Hmm. I'm missing some slides. Well, that's okay. Jump to this. Okay. So, the proposed design would require a curb cut to accommodate the three-car garage, which may negatively impact the busy pedestrian route along Monterey Avenue. Minimal curb cuts along the block provide a safe multimodal corridor. Within the Capitola General Plan, Mobility Element Goal Four states, "Provide a roadway system that enhances community aesthetics and promotes a high quality of life. Allowing a curb cut like the one proposed by the applicant would conflict with the above policies tied to Goal Four." The applicant is requesting a variance to the parking and open space requirements. To grant a variance, the planning commission must find that there are special circumstances tied to the lot and that the grant of a variance would not constitute a special privilege. Capitola Municipal Code requires that structures enlarged by more than ten percent must provide the minimum parking requirements. The existing duplex provides no parking. Because the proposed design increases the habitable floor area by a hundred and sixty percent, far beyond the ten percent maximum, parking for the structure must be provided onsite. Parking has long been a challenge in the village. Many structures in the village have had limited additions due to the city's requirement that parking must come into compliance when the habitable floor space of a structure is increased by more than ten percent. Duplexes require four parking spaces. The applicant would be seeking a variance to allow a duplex with three onsite parking spaces within a garage. Two recent projects provide examples of instances in which the applicant limited the size of their addition because they were unable to provide onsite parking. At one ten Monterey Avenue, the applicant wanted to expand the apartment above Britannia Arms, but because they were unable to provide onsite parking, they were limited to a maximum addition of habitable floor space of ten percent or ninety-three and a half square feet. The project was approved by the planning commission on November first, twenty eighteen. A second example is the four-plex at two twelve Monterey. On July twentieth, twenty seventeen, the planning commission approved a three hundred and four square foot addition that was limited to ten percent of the habitable floor area due to nonconforming parking. The concept also lacks the ten percent open space requirement. A variance to landscaping would be required to build the concept as designed. Aspects of the project's design conflict with recommendations found in the Central Village guidelines. These guidelines were adopted by the City of Capitola to promote excellence of development and maintain the unique character of Capitola Village. The guidelines discourage flat roofs, large garages, and parking, which requires vehicles to back out onto the street. The guidelines also recommend that front yards be landscaped to create a sense of entry to the unit. The applicant is seeking direction to the concept presented. Staff recommends the planning commission address the new curb cut, the deck over the sidewalk, variance requests, and the overall design.
Okay, thanks, Sasha. So any questions from the commission to staff?
So first question I had is procedurally, my recollection is when we've done conceptual reviews, that we don't take any votes. We just have the public presentation, and then the commissioners express their views, and that's it.
Yep, you're gonna give guidance on this.
So my second question was, do we know what the elevation of a floodplain is at that site? Maybe the architect does. When we get there.
I would ask the architect, yes.
TJ, I have a question.
Go ahead.
On the village overlay and the regulations, there's no onsite parking allowed in that area where this proposal is in. So why would it need a variance from parking if parking's not allowed?
So should, should the commission decide to allow parking on this spot, then because they're going beyond the maximum of what would be permitted on this, you know, beyond, then they would need a variance for that. But yes, in this area of the village, parking is not required on the site. It should be off-site.
Actually, it's two variances then, right? One to allow parking and then one to allow a substandard amount of parking.
I would have to digest that further to make sure that, read the language of that section of code, but it does state that within the central village for a nonhistoric building, that parking does not have to be, because it's not in the residential area, the parking's not required.
Any other questions for s-?
But it's really a vari- the variance would be to exceed the ten percent. So for the existing structure with no parking, if you exceed the ten percent limitation, that's, you know, a variance to that or the variance for the additional spot as well.
Right, and was it, when did we find out about the onsite parking being in question? Or the, was that just recently, or was that something that was about the, how it was excluded from the onsite parking exemption?
Yeah, so since this application came in, and at the time of the application, we've had consistent guidance to the applicant that onsite parking would not, in a curb cut, would not be supported by the Public Works Director and planning due to the pedestrian friendliness of the village. There is that section of code regarding parking in the village. And that, there's never been an exhibit tied to that that's stated within the zoning code. I recently was reviewing our land use, our land use plan for the coastal updates that we're doing, and the same reference is in the land use program, and for that it references an exhibit B. And exhibit B is the residential, identifies where parking is allowed and not allowed within the village, within our land use plan, which is part of our regulations within our, within the coastal zone, so.
Okay, very good.
So I do have a question.
Okay.
The curb cut, if we were to approve that, would that be, the applicant pay for that? Or would City Works have to make the curb cut, or?
Yeah, they would be responsible for improving the sidewalk and making the.
So in other words, it wouldn't be a burden to the general fund?
Correct, it would be the applicant.
TJ, I have one more.
Sure.
Since the floodplain regulations would not allow residential use on that first floor, and the village prohibits parking, what do we end up with, a building on stilts?
Lot of storage.
Yeah, that's what it sounds like.
Well, you can have commercial on the first floor. Within the floodplain. And under, for a residential, you're allowed to have a ten percent addition to the residential that's there.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Just before we leave this issue, this, is parking not allowed and required is a very confusing situation. I had the same concern that Commissioner Ruth did. It seems like we're saying both things, but the only way I can make sense of it is that you're required to have the number of parking spaces that the size of the building calls for, but they can't be on the lot. They have to be somewhere else. Which, I mean, I don't know where that somewhere else is, but I think that's what the, that's the only intent that I, the only sense I can make of it.
What are the current requirements today for the duplex?
Currently, the duplex has an obligation of four parking spaces, but there, the duplex can remain in place with, as it is, or have it up to a ten percent addition without the parking being triggered.
So, but the parking being triggered still requires four, right? It requires four today because it's a duplex.
Exactly.
And the new request is, would be also trigger four, but that it also triggers the onsite parking, which we're not, we don't allow them to have, so.
And he's asking for three.
Right, and he's asking because of the onsite parking. Right, got it. Okay. Now we'll go ahead. If we're done with commissioner questions, we'll open it up to the public. Would, there we go. Dennis?
Honorable members of the planning commission, staff. Thank you for the presentation, Sasha. Very well done. This project actually raises a lot of questions. How we're gonna deal with the future of this village with possible sea level rise and the possibility that, that with FEMA regulation, someday, this whole village is gonna be on stilts. This thing about not being in a parking zone is something really new to me. I had, I had never heard of this till tonight. And I can tell you, I did some mapping for you, and you're gonna see it in a second, of all the parking spots or all the places that have been allowed in the village are all over the place. And I'm gonna go through a few things. And with me, I have the owners of the property and who are also the residents. They live in this house here. And Mayor and Sebastian and Kate are all here in the audience too. They are local residents and they live in that house. The parameters that we're dealing with is the fact that to do anything over ten percent on that property is a limitation on what they can do now and keep it at that same level. If you do more than fifty percent of rebuild on that property, you're required to adhere to FEMA floodplain. Fifty percent on a remodel like that is not very much, much work. You would never be able to really put a second story or anything on that. You're really restricted. And, and, and in the presentation, you've seen slides already of how that, how that property sits. Um, it's surrounded on three sides with two-story properties right to their property line. The only one that has inset is this house here. And it will continue to have that, by the way. Um, and so, and so, the two stories surrounding it, your really only side of the house you're ever gonna see is the front, front elevation. The rest of the time, it's up against the house, you'll never see it. Uh, you may see a little bit of the roof line if you're up on the hill. Um, if flat roofs are, are, are discouraged, uh, we've done a bad job with that because fifty percent of the village is flat roost today. So, there's a design consideration there. Um, we'd like to discuss the, the following issues, uh, the project and get direction from this, from this, uh, commission and staff on this, on this project. Is, is that, um, the, the following things I see are really important. Uh, number one is the driveway cut. Number two is the visual, uh, character of the, of, of the building in proportion to what, what's out there. Um, the village's design and livability. Uh, the front decks, open space and second unit, those are all secondary things. I mean, you can give us direction on that. We're really open to morph this project if it's needed, okay? Um, the FEMA floodplain, I think that has to, if it's not a discussion here tonight, it needs to be discussed and it needs to, uh, staff or, and you, you should, you can recommend to staff they look into what, what this village is gonna look like in the future because of that. And it's, and it's gonna have to start taking this turn soon. It's clear in our general plan, um, and in the village plan, that, um, that the city is to encourage a mixed use of residential and commercial within, within the village itself, the village proper, okay? And in that, um, in your design guidelines for buildings in the village, it's required that residential be a take the second story. You cannot take a, a commercial area to the upstairs in this village. Um, what this makes is, it makes, makes good planning. It makes, it makes a viable community, it makes safe streets, any planner will tell you that. The mixed use of having people actually physically living in the village keeps the village safe. We have done everything we can to kill people from the, moving in the village. We, we, we make parking difficult, we make land use difficult, we, we make the transitions difficult. And so, what's happened is, is that there's, there's really very few people live in the village anymore. To find people that wanna live down there and make that community sta- safe, not just during the tourist season but all year round, you need people living down there. So, you, you have to accommodate to them somehow in residential areas as to, as to being able to live there and, and, and have a family down there. Um, Sasha, can you, can you bring up, um, the, uh, the aerial photo that I sent you, do you have that?
I, I believe they all have that at their, that should have been in the additional materials.
Oh, you may have in your folder then, okay.
Yeah, in their folder, yeah.
Okay, I did a, a little write-up with it too, I'm gonna read that up. But, uh, uh, there should be an aerial photo that shows you, um, there's two li- there's a line of demarcation of, of residential to commercial on here. And also, um, it has dots that show you all of the, all of the, um, all of the, all the properties with, with garage cuts. Street cuts. Um, the purple-silver line you see is a separation of commercial buildings and residential buildings on Monterey Avenue, Capitola Ave- Avenue. Not, it's not zoning, zoning goes differently, but this is reality, this is what is out there now. And if you see that, you'll see that behind every front row commercial building now is a residential structure. It only, the commercials are only on the first street, California Street, San Jose Avenue, Monterey, all of them are commercial buildings on the first corner and then any place behind that. This house, like the rest of these, is the first house in into residential area. This is the demarcation, this house is the demarcation where residential starts, starts on this property. It was allowed, the gum out building wrapped around the corner and it wrapped around the, the superintendent's building, but it, but it, it's actually that, that is commercial right next door. But this is the point where, where residential starts in these neighbor, into these neighborhoods. And that's true, that's true of every one of the streets in the village. That's where residential starts. And every one of these, you can go drive those streets, every one of them has a curb cut in the first lot in, just like this one, every single one of them. There's no exception. And, and most, most of the people in the village do. As far as, as the village overlay, I mean, the parking overlay, it doesn't hold true, it's never held true. There's also, there's also a, a picture in here that, that I sent in that shows, it's, it's taken from up on El Camino Medio looking down onto it and it shows you, um, I think, I hope you, I hope you have that in your packet, but it just shows how low, I can give this one too, how low the profile of this house is compared to everything around it.
Nope.
Along with very few people living in the village today, we also have a situation where, where we have, we have an enormous amount of failing commercial. We have a vacancy rate higher than I've seen since back when we lost the beach. I mean, it's, it's really, really vacant down there. So, having people that live down there is important to that community. Not just have them as second homes, but actually have people that live in that, live in that lower area. The blue dots indicate on, on that picture, indicate that, that, uh, the cuts at Monterey Avenue, Park Avenue, San Jose and California Street. And that's, all of them are in line with the property we're talking about. There's, and there's also seven curb cuts walking from, um, our village, the parking lot, the village parking lot and the railroad tracks down to, to Monterey, on Monterey, on the same side of the street, there's seven curb cuts there. Those houses are all backing out onto the street. And actually, it's more dangerous in the upper end because the fact that cars are moving much, much faster than when they get down to the bottom here, you're almost to a stop sign. The, the sightline, when you're, when you're at this property, you're standing in front of it, is actually, actually very good looking up the street. Coming around the corner, no, I can't say it is, coming around off of Capitola Avenue, come around the corner that way. But you're backing onto the side where it's coming down the hill. And you, because there's two yellow, yellow spaces there, that you could, your sightline is actually clear up the hill, which is unusual. You, uh, there's very, very often, most of the time, there's no cars in that, in those spots in front. It's a yellow curb in front. And that's what we're removing, is removing one of the two yellow curbs to make our curb cut. We're really asking for the same rights and privileges that have been granted to, to every, you know, every resident in, in location to the commercial area that's been granted in the past. We, we have a local family, this is aren't to live in the billy, village. Land use policy, um, with both FEMA and the city, really deters them from actually making their residence down there. Um, what they give up here is, is you take one spot away on the street, but they're taking, right now, they have three po- spots all the time in the village, on the streets, because they have a renter and they have two for their own, their own, their own, their own use. So, by taking the one spot away, you're taking three cars off of the parking that's in the village. So, it actually increases the parking in the village by allowing this. Good math? I think so. The way this is gonna work is we're gonna take the existing house and we're actually gonna lift this house up and it becomes a second floor and then it'll be stilted. In, in the FEMA floodplain, I think it is at four, three and a half feet, right there. Okay. Um, it's the second story becomes and then it's added to the top. It, it will not be any higher than the gum out building that was built seven years ago next door. It's the same height as that and it meets, meets the buil- building requirements. The reason, um, the reason that we're up to, to required for parking spaces is because we're, we're, we're required to place parking, parking spaces that create parking spaces. Let me, can I explain that? Is, is that if you took the parking square footage out of this thing here, you'd only be required two spaces. But when you add the parking spaces and you're creating, you have an ordinance that, that requires you to have parking spaces for the parking spaces. Um, I submitted a new site plan, I hope it made a lot clearer as to where the sidewalk is in relation to this building. The, the gum out property built next door here, as you could see, was built, built right up to the property line. That was built seven years ago and that's right up at the, at the edge of the sidewalk. Where our proposal is actually back from the sidewalk. It's not at the sidewalk, we're pulling it back. It's the same footprint as the building is now. Um, we're, we're, we're basically a three-story structure in the front and in the back of the, the back, the back half of the building actually goes to two-story. And the concern about the people with a back deck that we saw letters from, it doesn't interfere with them at all because the building's pulled back from them. If there's, is an issue about solar access, we can address that. And we'll, we'll, we'll do a solar study if it requires that, make sure that that's not a problem. Um, the property is physically blocked in, it doesn't fit in the village like it is. You know, I'm hoping that you can help us, you know, give me feedback to the design of this house, what is acceptable. The, the alternative is to not giving us a curb cut or this. Um, we allow that little house to stay there and they get a ten percent on that. And ten percent of a, of a three-thousand square foot house is completely different than ten percent of, of, of a eight-hundred square foot house. Not, not really fair, you know, it's not real for, a fair calculation to use. So, if, we have a three-thousand square foot house and you, and you offer us ten percent, we get three-hundred square feet more. And a hundred square, uh, eight-hundred, a thousand square foot house, you get, what, what's that, thirty feet? What, whatever it is, but portion, because this is a small house, it just doesn't make sense. And, and there'll never be a livable unit for someone to live there. It'll be a rental, it could still be a rental, they could move out of town. You lose the local residents, you, you lose someone that, that wants to live here. By allowing them to have the curb cut and, and, and pulling out a FEMA floodplain, they can go, they're gonna, they're end up going over the fifty percent. So, it pulls them up out of FEMA floodplain as a requirement and, um, and gives them an adequate living space and, um, i- if you approve a rental in the back. That does, that's not a must, that's, that's a, that's a quest for fact that we're providing additional housing there. So, um, um, I'm, I'm ready to take any feedback that I can get from this commission and from staff on this and, and, um, I, I, I'll, ma- maybe the owner wants to say a word, if you okay?
Sure.
I have a question for Dennis.
Dennis, real quick before you go, and has a question.
I have a few questions and then the owner can come up. So, I wanna zero in on this floodplain for a second because it's important as to what options are available for this site. So, in the discussion and the staff report, there's a lot of talk about the first floor has to be vacant, but you're, you're telling me that the, um, elevation, the FEMA elevation is three and a half feet. So, the house only has to, you don't have to have a first floor that either is a garage or you could just have the house up three and a half feet and you would comply with the FEMA rules, is that your understanding?
That is correct. That's it, that's the floor level, that's all how the floor level would have to be, yes.
So, I just wanna make sure that I'm misled into thinking you have to have a whole story below the, uh?
No, you, you have to meet it, but what happens is, is if you want that space usable at all, you, you need to at least get, you know, seven and a half feet of ceiling area and that's all.
Oh, okay, good answer to my question.
Clarification, so, you're saying just if you raise the, put, basically put on stilts three feet, then you're good?
Yeah, because one of the options we're gonna get into when we start talking and kicking this around is, is to do a rebuild of this that doesn't, uh, require additional parking because it's not beyond the ten percent and, you know, whether that can be done with just the three and a half foot, uh, completely take that house down and rebuild a fifteen, a hundred and fifty square foot project there. It's three and a half feet up.
Okay.
Very good, any other questions for Dennis for yous? Okay, the applicant, Mar, you want, come up?
Um, so, just a couple of points, thank you for, for letting me state, uh, state my case tonight, um. I have a few things I wanted to say. First is, um, kind of general, uh, we, we, we bought the property in two thousand fourteen. It's, uh, a place, um, uh, with three units, very rundown. Um, we had, uh, in the, out of the three units, we had one unit that had a severely mentally ill woman living there under section eight housing. Very nice person, but the upkeep was terrible, the place was rotting with a terrible smell. On the back unit was a, um, another section eight housing gentleman who, um, I know for a fact there were, um, police was called on, on, on him multiple times. There were some, some rumors that, um, he was, um, acting as a pimp to his girlfriend, uh, there. There were complaints from the neighbors. We took over the, the place, we, we treated everybody kindly and with respect and, uh, after about a year of remodeling, we were able to move in there. And in two thousand sixteen, uh, we put in about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of, uh, renovations into that, uh, first floor where we currently live. Uh, it's not big, uh, it's pleasant inside, um, and, um, that's where we are now. It's a little, it's, it's small for us, um, and, um, what, as you, you can see too that it, in, to my mind, I feel a little bit embarrassed living there, I have to say. It looks like an eyesore to me. Um, these, uh, three large buildings around us. We are kind of this very low, uh, building with these, this kind of funny looking roof. Um, and, um, it's, what we're trying, what we really are here tonight is for guidance from you because, um, we're, what we really want is to enlarge the house a little bit. It's not, not by a lot, not looking for some monstrosity. Um, looking to enlarge it by about seven hundred square feet, seven hundred, thirty square feet. Uh, add a couple of rooms and a bathroom. And, um, in order for us to do that, according to, as far as we understand from, from the city, from staff, we need to have parking because it's a be, above ten percent and that activates that rule that we need to add parking. In order for us to add parking, we have to have a curb cut. There's no other option to this place because it's so tucked into those, uh, between those three other structures. So, um, then the city is saying to us, but you can't do a curb cut. So, that's where we are. We, um, we, we want to get the, the building up to date. Um, and, yeah, we want to continue to enjoy living in the, in the village. Our preference would be to have curb cut and have the, the, um, which other people have around us and be able to park there, that would certainly be our preference. Um, but it's not the main thing that's driving this. That's the, the reason that we're asking for parking and for the variance and to make this, uh, available is because we want to be able to, uh, bring the building up to date, to have, uh, another couple of rooms, uh, there. And, um, and we can't do that without your guidance because we're stuck, uh, kind of in both ways. So, um, I'm saying all this also, not only to ask for your guidance, but also to, for you to understand that we wouldn't be excited about tearing the house down. We just finished in two thousand sixteen a large remodel, that's, uh, that's nice. We wanna, we wanna figure out a way to preserve that, wanna continue living there and enjoying it. Um, and, um, and, and we just don't know how that could be with, with these, with these convoluted, uh, laws. We, we seem like, uh, there's no way out for us other than seeking your guidance on this.
Great, thank you, Mar. Any, any more questions?
Have you considered commercial for the first floor?
You know, uh, we, we did consider a commercial, I have to say, I'm not excited about it at all. Um, first, I'm not, it's not, I'm not interested in making my house a business. Um, but not only that, I'm looking around. Um, and I see a lot of vacant, uh, commercial, uh, buildings around me. I don't feel at all optimistic that I'd be able to, uh, have a, you know, um, have this place rented out for commercial. Um, and, you know, I, this place was always residential, wanna keep it residential. Um, again, I don't have to have the parking if you guys, if you can give us some variance to have a second story that's above ten percent, but without having parking, we'd, we'd be great. I like the idea of parking, I think we're doing the city a favor in a way because we're adding two parking spaces, uh, we're, we're adding three taking off one, so a total of two. Uh, I think it's safe the way the, the views are, I think others get it too, so that would be my preference. Uh, but, um, commercial, I don't think really would, would, uh, would work or be exciting for me to, to take on.
Okay. Anything else? Is anybody else from the public like to speak things for Mar?
Oh, one more thing, I thought that in, for commercial, back to your question, sir. Um, my understanding was for commercial, we'd have to provide somewhere off parking or add parking to the village too, but I might, I might be mistaken on that.
Yeah, that would be my next question for staff, is that an intensification of use?
It is, yes.
Good evening, board members, uh, my name is Dave Johnson. I reside at two-one-three Monterey, which is next door to the proposed project. Um, I have some concerns, we in Capitola here, I've lived there for ten years. We call it the jewel box, we call it the jewel box for a reason, it is a very, very special area. I commend the board members and so forth for doing. I commend the board members and so forth for doing what they've done with this city. And that is to put the parking structure at the very top of this hill and try to direct foot flow down this pathway. It's probably, I want to say it's probably the heaviest traveled foot path to the beach, to and from the beach that there is in this city. With that said, on any given weekend, there is an absolute river of 80-year-olds down to eight-month-olds in strollers and so forth, transitioning down this sidewalk. If we look at this property, there are no cuts in the sidewalks in that division right there. So from my house on, there are no cuts. And that is because this is when everybody tries to flow into this one little area and take this one sidewalk area. I am concerned very, very much so about the safety issues and so forth of the individuals trying to get to the beach. Also, right in front of this proposed project is the loading zone. We try to keep the commerce trucks and so forth that are bringing in the goods for the storefront owners to stay out of the village. They park there, they unload. Today, I saw a number of them unloading their products and so forth and taking them to the vendors right there. I've spoke to a number of the little storefront owners in the area right there. They're very concerned about even during the construction phase, where this foot traffic is going to be diverted to. Something is gonna be, that sidewalk will have to be closed during the construction phase and even after that point in time. And these individuals are somewhat pattern-driven and so forth. And once they stop coming down through that proposed walkway, who knows if they'll ever come back again. We have, as we've cited already, we do have a problem in the village with keeping the storefronts open and keeping the commerce flowing. We don't want to disrupt that. We love our storefront owners and we want to make those individuals prosper. Also, this is right at the very start where this proposed project's going to be. This is where we hold our events. This is at the very crux of where the Art and Wine Festival starts, where the Hot Rod Car Show starts, and numerous other events and so forth. This is where we shut off the streets and this is where the foot traffic is and so forth. I don't know how you could use this proposed parking area if that is disrupted and so forth. As I say, lastly, I am concerned about my property in particular, along with all the other issues that I've just cited and so forth. And that is that they are zero lot lines. When the new footings are being proposed and built for a three-story structure, I am concerned about the footings on my property and so forth. We, just a few years ago, got approval from this board for a solar rooftop installation and so forth. That's what our proposal is, to put that up there with this additional 10-wall, 10-foot, which is what every story is factored at, 10 stories high, or 10-foot, excuse me. This would add another 10-foot up against my structure, which is going to shade all proposed solar activity that I could have up there. Also, when these buildings are so close together, my wall is a block wall. This is concrete and it's designed to introduce water, exit water and so forth. It needs breathing room is the sense and so forth. If I've got another three-story structure against my two-story structure with this much room, there is no ventilation proposed for that, for those block walls and so forth. As likewise with my neighbor who has a stucco exterior too. Those structures, they take in water and they need to be able to get the event of ventilation and be able to exit with those moisture content. I appreciate being able to speak with you this evening and so forth. I'm not the individual that says not in my backyard. That's, I want to be good neighbors with everybody and so forth. I really, I do. And I mean, all about the 10% growth of this structure. I think it needs to have something done to it. I fully agree with that and so forth. Just not to the proposed size that they're trying to go from 1,500 to 3,700, three-story structure, parking underneath. It's just, it's an ill-conceived project. We all live in different neighborhoods, different homes and different things like that. Your homes are different than my home and so forth. They all have their pluses and their minuses and so forth. One of the things about being in their location is they've got incredible access to the ocean. One of the downsides is they don't have the parking. So it's a give and take relationship as with anything in our lives. And I think that's what we have to address here.
Okay, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody else from the public? Go ahead.
Would you like to sign in?
Please.
I'm here on behalf of Barbara Redding. She wasn't able to come to the meeting tonight. My name is Dory Arthur.
Yeah.
I live at 104 Cliff Avenue. And Barbara is property owner at 201 Monterey, the Heen Building. And she sent a letter and it was sent, I didn't know whether everyone got it or not.
We did.
Yep.
Yeah, she was very concerned about the curb cut. If it goes in, then she was, as her letter stated, in 1972, they requested something of a curb cut and were denied. And that's, and they have the property and place to park two cars. So I think she said, if you determine that this is a reasonable request for the property owner, then I would, I will be the next in line for the same consideration. And I think she definitely means it. She has the space, she has the room. If you're gonna give curb cut for this project, she would like to have curb cut for her project. And it's right, it's much closer. It would add value to her property. It would do the whole thing. So please look at this. You're setting up a precedent. If you allow curb cut along there, there are other people that will request it. Barbara's one of them.
Great, thank you, Dory. Okay, do we have anybody else that would like to talk? If not, then Dennis, I'll show you. If you go over to Capitola Avenue, same type of feed that comes from the upper parking lot there. There's a curb cut about every 50 feet, the whole length of that thing. It has not affected people walking in the village. It's, this side is no different. This actually has, this side, I don't think has as much traffic as the Capitola Avenue side. My point is, is that people back out on driveways all along that street. They're everywhere along there. And that's, it's just part of living in Capitola. It's a slower community. And so we're not presenting any more danger on Monterey Avenue than on Capitola Avenue. It seems to work fine. Just one thing is, the gentleman came and spoke. I would hope he'd pick up a set of our plans because you can see that in consideration, the footprint doesn't change enough. This other project that we had now is exactly the same footprint they were giving, as far as airspace and whatever he wants. The whole village is built back-to-back. That's the way, that's why they have zero, that's why they roll out zero lot lanes. But in consideration, he should actually look at the plans there. What happens in the village during special events is that they don't let any cars come down into it. So you don't have to worry about having parking going underneath the house at that time. You won't be able to do that. So it doesn't, it doesn't change the function or the use of this neighborhood or this area at all. It actually helps it because we're freeing up three spaces, three spaces on the streets that now are occupied by the people that live there. They're gonna be underneath their house. Thank you for your time. Dennis, I think we have.
While you're up here, Dennis, question, this concern about the ventilation, I'm not a structural engineer, but is that something that the gentleman brought up about breathing houses and he's gonna have moisture problems and the things are gonna rot around in the village because of, do you know, is there any?
I'm not gonna argue with him, but I'll tell you that I build, we build them all over the village, back-to-back, everywhere. They're everywhere. And they don't have ventilation. But there is a natural, there's a separation. I have a lot of foot on each side of the building, which it is now, and it's been fine for years. We're not changing that. So we do have a separation there. As far as him getting behind his building to do any repair, it's the same for both buildings. It's just, it's this way, but they're built every day in the village. Every building almost is built back-to-back like this. But he does, if ventilation is concerned, he does have that. He has that. And that's true of the building behind it. Now, the Gumhouse side is different because there's actually a walkway that goes through. The Gumhouse didn't allow any walkway going into their property. They built right to the property line. The only way they have to get into their building in the back is to walk through this property that we're talking about. And we're gonna keep it like that. We're gonna keep it so that that side there, and that is really an open space area that wasn't taken into consideration. I know we can make the 10% if that's an issue. You know, the 10% as far as open space and landscaping, we could landscape the front. And so the conditions that were put on us, we can make work. The thing that, the thing that doesn't work and changes the project and all is if we don't have the curb cut, it's gonna be, it's a totally different game we're talking here.
So my question really was like a physics question. In terms of this ventilation thing, and I'm not exactly sure I understand the concern, but it sounds like maybe if you build these houses too close together, then they deteriorate faster. Is that?
That's true if they're a wood structure. If his block on that side, it doesn't change it. It's not a breathing wall. You don't have vents at the bottom or anything. So, but again, we do have a one-foot space there that allows airflow in there, so.
And while you're up there, maybe I can ask a question of staff. The yellow curb that was mentioned, and it was also mentioned about this being a loading zone, would the curb cut effectively eliminate a commercial loading zone?
Well, we would, we can talk about that. Are you done with Dennis?
That was a question.
No, we can bring back the staff and then we can have that discussion if you want. Because we typically don't go back and forth too much, but otherwise we're gonna end up in a debate all night. I think we have good information. Do you think it's gonna be something that's gonna, in disagreement with something that Dennis said?
It's really one sentence. So the lady that mentioned property 201, I think that's a historical structure.
Right.
And then it's also on the corner, it's actually right on the corner of Capitola. I don't see how that is similar to our situation.
We understand. Thank you. Great. So if, I'll bring it back in because we start the discussion here. If we can put the list up of the 1, 2, 5, the curb cut, would you mind going through one at a time?
I was just gonna point out, there are two spaces that are loading in front of the two properties and they're 20-minute spaces.
And we would lose.
During certain hours.
Right, the other one would stay. And while we're talking about that, real quick, are those after 1 o'clock parking spots? I don't, they are. So after 1 o'clock, they are open to the public. Okay, good.
So could you have a loading zone with a curb cut? Or would that eliminate?
That would eliminate it. You wouldn't have a loading zone in front of a driveway. You could have, I think their proposal was, would only get rid of one of the loading zones.
But if it's a big truck, right.
You would block their driveway. That's, that curb cuts for their driveway, so if the truck was.
But, no, all right, yeah, of course.
So would you mind, is that right, going one item at a time? So we'll start, let's just talk about the curb cut and see what you.
I'll start. I buy the argument. First of all, I'd like to thank Dr. Katz for investing his time and money in this community. I realize this is frustrating. My heart goes out to you and I hope we can come up with something that's a win-win. There are a lot of rules here, however, and I've been studying them and trying to figure out something that we can actually create reasonable variances to. And this curb cut, it seems to me, I buy the argument that we are in fact gaining parking. And that, I've been in enough of these meetings where I know parking is key. And if we can add parking spaces to the village, that seemed like a win. My concern would be the garage. I also know that garages sometimes become storage facilities. So I would need some sort of assurances, maybe they're making it a carport or something that we really do gain those parking spaces. With regards to the pedestrian traffic and the effect of that curb cut, I, I'm impressed or I'm pleased that he's got, he's keeping the setback. So in fact, we're not losing that sidewalk. And we claim that sidewalk all the way to his frontage anyway due to historic usage, so if I'm not mistaken. So there is, there does seem to be plenty of clearance, more so than the other two properties that go right to their property line. So other than the notion of not having a visible carport or a visible garage that where I can assure that the parking truly is gained, I buy the argument.
I'm actually, I don't, I don't feel that the curb cut is so much the issue in my mind. Maybe the intensification of the property is more the issue that I'm thinking. It's a duplex currently. You're proposing to do another duplex. The scale of the duplex is larger, obviously. I'm, I'm, the, I like the idea of having parking out of Capitola and on private land. Maybe the three spots kind of sits a little funny with me, I think. Is maybe having two spots per duplex, I mean, per unit would be, I mean, I feel like I'm swinging the other way, but is that, kind of makes sense.
Yeah, so that is, the requirement is two per, and they're asking for variance for that extra spot.
I thought we were gonna just do the curb cut.
Yeah, but we're just.
Right, I'm sorry.
So are you done about the curb cut? Is that?
Yeah, I just didn't really have too much about the curb cut. I think that, I think that parking off out of Capitola is a great, is a good thing.
So I guess we'll go down the line here. You wanna go next?
Go ahead.
So I do have an issue with the curb cut. I spent a lot of time pondering this. So I looked at Capitola Avenue from Stockton to the, where we are right now, has a ton of curb cuts. And I'm familiar with the area and I've never seen any real problem caused by those curb cuts. They're all historically pretty old. There's only one I can think of that is within a sort of modern era here. So, and I think it's the same on Monterey. There's maybe one or, there's a few there, but they're all old ones and things have changed. The new city parking lot has come in since then. We have a lot more activities in the village. There's been a lot of changes since those curb cuts were made. And I have trouble adding to those at this point in time. I think it's a, it's a safety issue. It's an aesthetics, an issue about what you want the area close to the core of the village to look like. And we'll get to the variance, but I'm not sure. It's come out that of the three parking spaces, two of them are tandem. What that means is one car parks behind the other. So you've got a garage at the bottom of the hill on Monterey Avenue with the car that's inside needing to get out. And it's just really the wrong place to be doing that kind of automobile shuffling. So we'll get into some of the other issues, but all in all, I mean, I, because I don't think we can meet the variance requirements at all anyway. But I think that something needs to be done to remodel that property that does not change the parking situation.
Well, I would concur with Ed, but I'm going to have some difficulty limiting my comments right now to the curb cut.
They kind of get intertwined, don't they?
You know, I think our overriding goal should be to maintain the character in the village. I mean, that's the whole reason we have zoning. That's the whole reason we have the general plan. We spent literally hundreds of thousands of dollars in the last couple of years developing it with the zoning ordinance and the update on the general plan. And we did that for good reason, because we want to develop the community in a way that the people want it to develop. And my own personal feeling is I think variances should only be granted in really exceptional circumstances. And I don't know that there's any, anything special or unique about this particular property that requires so many variances. If you go to three stories, yeah. But my preference, Dennis, would be to go to two stories, lift the house up, build a story to it, so you keep the residential at street level without the parking on site. That's where I'm feeling right now.
Well, yeah, the, having the curb cut is a concern. And we actually did approve one recently on Monterey coming down the hill. And it was a tough, it was a tough one to get past. And I still, when I go by there, always question how safe it is. Obviously, I think it's a little safer because you're at the bottom of the hill, not cars speeding down. But having said that, of the physical altercations I've seen during the summer of parking areas, it's always been right in front of your house. For some reason, I don't know, it's that stop sign making a right turn. For some reason, I don't know, it's that stop sign making a right turn with all the pedestrians and people trying to get a parking. It just seems unlike Capitola, which is a little, the traffic flows a little better. There's more room, it seems like, for pedestrians to be on, on either side. It's just a congested area. And while I know the gentleman says it's the most heavily trafficked with pedestrians, I don't know if that's true, but it sure seems like it causes more concern there because of the congestion. So um, I also am, you know, have a tough time with variances. But I'm also very much a pro homeowner to try to help you get what you want as far as the living space. So um, you know, I think that's one of the things, the great things about this conceptual reviews, we can have some discussions and, and maybe get to that, um, that point. So I would say I have difficulty with the, with the curb cut. Um, I'm a garage man. If anybody knows me, I'm a garage person. And I would love for you to have your own garage. I just don't really see how we can um help you out there um, and do with this curb cut and that, that uh whole situation there. So having said that, why don't we move on to uh the deck over sidewalk is the next concern? And see, Peter, you wanna start off again?
Okay. Um, and again, I don't have a problem with that particular um issue. Let's see, do what the issue I have is that, okay, so I'm gonna bring up the issue I do have, since it's not listed. Um, the reason I'm okay with the, with the, with the deck is, is I looked at the village guidelines and it shows all these decks overhanging the very walkways. And it's like, okay, that's what we're looking for in terms of a village, um, a village, a personal sized pedestrian friendly area. And the deck that he's proposing doesn't uh overhang what we typically use as the historic use, usage boundary. In other words, it doesn't go beyond the edge of the previous, or the adjacent two houses. So um, so to me, it's not uh, it, it's not a problem. You know, like where he's like taking advantage of, of, of city right away. But I do have a problem, I guess, with the um, the bulk mass, the, the flat roof issue. I know that's not here, but um, it's.
We can talk, it's in as a design area, so we can.
Okay, that's a design thing I was, alright, that's fine, so, that's all I have.
Pardon me, commission, um, Chair Person, I'll, could I just expla-, we got a new um attachment that came in today? Because the, the original plans were not that clear of exactly where the deck is in alignment with the sidewalk, so.
And their property line.
Okay, I'd love to take you through that. So um, so that when you make your comments, you know exactly. So the property line for this block comes along the edge of the building next door. And then this is the Katz property, once you get to this corner. And it continues, it, it makes a diagonal across um from the corner of that building almost out to the edge of curb of the sidewalk, um, and then further along. So this is, his property is right here. The deck itself, what, the um designer colored in the sidewalk area to be a five foot stretch of sidewalk, actually, the Public Works Department would st-, say that the sidewalk has traditionally also extended into this area up to the home. It's been utilized by the public for years and has been a public sidewalk, but it is on the Katz property. So the, actually, the, the proposal for the deck, it comes out off the side of the home and out here, comes out, and I would say this is over the sidewalk, and then jogs back to the corner. Um, back to the cor-, prior to the corner here, about a foot, and then comes back to the home. So just to be clear, the deck is following the property line, then it comes across at a ninety degree or parallel with the frontage of the building, so.
Katie, how far does it encroach onto the actual sidewalk area there?
So from our measurements, from the front of the home, out onto the sidewalk was a little over seven feet. Um, and that's us considering the property between the front of the home sidewalk, which is on his property.
The edge of the deck is actually on that drawing. It shows a very little, a little more sidewalk.
It's.
See, you can see it coming out.
Where the dots are.
See how it barely, it barely figures over.
So it's.
Inside.
So it comes out and then along here, and then.
This seems to me to be getting way too detailed for a conceptual review. What we wanna do is find out whether he can build a thirty-seven hundred square foot property or a fifteen hundred square foot property. And a foot or two a deck is really not where we wanna kind of focus now.
Yeah, I think one of the concerns is it is uh, well, it's within his property line and, and maybe we're kind of familiar with it because we had the fence issue with you, and the fence, obviously, you weren't able to go out to your property line. So um, the deck over the sidewalk, Courtney.
He's thinking about, he's gonna get rid of the fence, you're gonna get that sidewalk back.
So conceptually, Courtney, what do you think?
Conceptually, I, I know the design is number five, but the design of the, the deck, the shape of the building itself is, is not favorable to me, but that's a personal opinion. Um.
You're here for.
Proportionally, I feel that um, looking at the building from the front, it seems very top heavy. Um, especially with the garage as a big mass on the bottom. And then going up, you have these decks that seem to overpower the whole streetscape. And it's just, again, a personal opinion, but I think that it, it does kind of dominate that.
Okay, good.
And I, I think it's a minor point. I think, once we get past the conceptual uh issues here and they come in with a real set of plans, this is the kind of thing that we can kick around in an application.
I think a French balcony would be more appropriate.
Okay, very good. I don't know if this is helping you on Dennis, but we'll just keep moving through it. So uh, now we're down to talking about the variance and, and over the ten percent open space requirement. And you had mentioned that you think you can get that through the sidewalk and stuff area. So this, again, may not be um a big issue. And it's something that we've seen in the village over and over again because uh, the, the way that houses are built down there. But, so I don't know if you wanna say, if you have any concerns.
Well, I think there should be an attempt to create some open space in terms of a dirt patch that you could eventually put a flowerbed in or something, as opposed to just nothing but sidewalk and concrete. Again, the idea of being pedestrian friendly and human sized village. So I, I would want at least an attempt to meet that, open space requirement.
I, I agree with Peter.
Okay.
Pass.
Pass it.
Yeah, I think essentially it's new construction, so there's no reason it can't be met.
Okay, very good. Uh, for the onsite parking variance, and this really kind of ties into the, the big picture here, but.
Yeah, it's, it's the same comment basically. I think you're gaining.
If, if you, if with the curb cut, you're for the uh.
Yeah, exactly.
Onsite parking.
Yeah, I'm, kind of as I said before, I think that um having more onsite parking would be beneficial to the.
Okay.
Would be what? Agreeable?
Beneficial.
So I'm back to uh, this requires a variance and uh, variances by state law require that you satisfy two both requirements, that there be special circumstances based on the shape or topography, et cetera, of the lot, and that it not be a special privilege. And I, I don't really see how they can meet the variance requirements with this application. I mean, this, this project. So isn't the special circumstances the uh, the floodplain issue, so? Well, the whole uh village is in the floodplain, so uh, if that were a special circumstance, we just wouldn't have any rules anymore. Because um, everyone would qualify for variance. Everyone would qualify to, who, who's building a new property would have to, you know, like, like was Dennis said, we're all eventually gonna be on stilts at some point. So that as the new properties come in, you would have to meet that. And the only way to meet it is to raise a house. And if you're gonna raise it, you might as well gain the parking. Isn't that a special circumstance? Yeah, not to me, because it's, it's not, it's a circumstance that applies to everyone. It's not a special condition of the lot that's different from other lots. Well, and so as the new people come in with their new applications, they're also gonna have the same problem. So we're gonna have to address that for them as well. And they would, they would want a variance. And yeah, well, like again, eventually the whole village is on stilts as we grant these variances in order to meet the requirements. This doesn't really have to do with the floodplain. It has to do with the fact that he's uh rebuilding the property by more and, and increasing the size by more than ten percent, which means he has to meet the parking requirements. It's not an issue of floodplain, but it's an issue of having four spaces now required. If they stay within the ten percent, then they are grandfathered and don't have to meet the four parking space requirement. So if they go beyond the ten percent and they have to meet the four parking space requirement, they have to satisfy, in my opinion, the requirements for variance. It just seems like it's a, it's a catch twenty-two.
It absolutely is.
So, you know, if you, if you want a vibrant village, you're gonna have to interpret these catch twenty-twos so that people come to the village and build houses and businesses and things. I, it just seems that he's in a box here that we gotta find him, help him find a way out of.
Well, the FEMA requirements have been in effect since the early eighties. And there hasn't been a problem with people working within those parameters, as far as I know.
So this, I was curious about this thing seven years ago that was approved, this boo-, blue gum thing or whatever, was that, do you remember that? Was that?
Blue gum?
What was it?
Gum out.
Gum out.
Yeah.
Seven years ago that was approved.
So do we have a variance there, or?
Well, no, it's commercial downstairs.
Alright.
But, but, there was no.
There, there.
I don't think there was any im-, uh, intensification of size, uh, when that was remodeled. It was the same size before.
And they have onsite, site parking.
There's also onsite parking that's um, that comes off of San Jose.
Right, yeah.
But they're under parks. It's way under parks.
Okay, so anyway, we're, it sounds like we have a division.
But, yeah, you, you.
Yeah, I could support a variance for the offsite parking requirement if the building were to be two stories. And one of the things, and this kind of melds right into the design aspect up there, and I think Courtney kind of alluded to this, is we've got those bulky buildings on both sides, and we'll just fill in that space in the middle. You're gonna have a solid wall of buildings there without any real variation of height and design. And if we could go to two stories, you're gonna get a nice variation, I think, which lends the character to the village. Uh, we could grant a variance for, for the offsite parking. They could expand the size of their house. We'd eliminate the curb cut, and it would seem to solve all the issues.
Yeah, I, um, and I guess we're kind of into that whole design discussion, it just happens that way. And I, and I, I think it's, this is gonna just get more complicated. I, once the coastal commission, we see what they're, because you have the FEMA floodplain, but the new coastal commission uh concern about um sea rise and stuff is just, I think, well, we'll see what they have to say. You, you may already have some insight to it from staff, but you know, their concern is the city level's gonna be nine feet over the, I, that's the last I heard, something like that, into the village. So I think this whole idea of having a first floor um with some type of either commercial or parking or storage is gonna be something that's gonna, we're gonna see more and more uh over the years. And, and it comes back to this design thing about the, like the garage door. And, and so what, we know, how the, how are we gonna make that work in the long term? It's just something we're gonna have to look at. And it looks like this applicant's one of the first ones to touch on that. So um, I think, Mick, did, we pretty much know where you stand now. Um, Ed, you wanna?
The only thing I haven't touched on is the design, and I agree with Courtney that this is um not ideal at this point, and it seems massive, and the garage in the front is a negative, uh, which goes along with the other issues that we've talked about. And I kind of see where we're going here, which is some, some other kind of redevelopment of this property that is not, does not put parking in a curb cut, and is not maybe quite as massive and quite as large, but it still gives you an opportunity to redevelop. And at that point, maybe, you know, maybe I'd buy the variance uh to the parking requirements. I don't understand. Why, why would, why would this mass change your mind on the parking variance? Well, yeah, I, I'm, there's no logical connection there, but I'm saying, I'm, I'm listening to what you're saying. And if the proj-, if, and they're just looking for guidance, and you know, there's, nothing's binding here at this point. But if we got a project that satisfied a lot of these other concerns and didn't involve a curb cut and didn't involve a garage facing the street, then you know, it would be something to look at differently, put it that way. Well, my only comment on the design is, and I think that a camel is a, is a horse designed by a committee, and I don't wanna get on that committee, but there is a legitimate uh guidance in the, in the, in the zoning code about flat roofs and, and massing. And so I would wanna see maybe just a mansard roof or something that, that addresses that, as opposed to just saying, yeah, here's another flat roof.
Yeah, in, in the uh new code, we um purposely changed the code to have a plate height difference from the uh height, roof height, so we could add some character to it, knowing that this was gonna be something that's gonna come down the road to us because of this whole floodplain issue, that we're gonna end up with people building right up to the top of the height. And, and we haven't adopted that code in the coastal area. But I didn't, honestly, I didn't take a look at to see how the plate height would apply to this job. And I, I don't know if, you know, but I, I would agree that um, although I'd love for you to have a garage, because like I said, I, I live in my garage. But um, I think that we could probably make something work with the variance on the parking on the street. Um, given, given the not raising it up to full height, eliminate some of your footage of your far, floor ratio and um maybe having a little reduction there. So I don't know if that gives you a lot of what you were looking for tonight, um, about the conceptual review, but you certainly got a variation of perspect-, persp-, perceptions and views, that's for sure.
No, I think this is good direction. And, and what we would ask of you is that, that to make this project work, let's, let's, let's drop the parking out of it. Let's just say that there's two options for us. One is, one is, is we, as Ed suggested, we go and we start the first floor at floodplain height. And we build a new house that is two-story, okay? The other option is, if you give us the alternative of keeping the existing house and allow us to go over the ten percent requirement. In other words, if we can, if we can add a reasonable amount of square footage upstairs, we could take that existing house, we could put a second story on it. But the tens, what happens is, is that when you take the ten percent figure, you go up a staircase and you got one room. It just doesn't work. It doesn't make the house right. So if we can have either of those options, maybe you guys can suggest a little, little bit, but if you could have that, we can make this work without parking garage below.
I would just wanna say that I'd much rather not tear down the first floor, we could just remodel it. We love it just the way it is. We'd love the, the opportunity to just have a sizable second floor that allows for us to have two bedrooms and a bathroom.
Yeah, and that's really, yeah, I, I think you have the general direction of where we'd like to see it go. I mean, almost like you'd have to go to another conceptual review or something, I guess, to Katie.
There is one thing in that, in that idea, um, FEMA guidelines have exceptions for historic structures to be rebuilt within the floodplain, where this structure, they went through the process. They haven't quite gone through the process yet, but they hired a outside consultant to make findings that the structure was not historic. If they did wanna keep the structure in the floodplain, they could remove that from their application, keep it on our historic inventory so they're not running up against FEMA flood, floodplain, and then work towards a second story. But it would have to be in keeping with the Secretary of Interior standards and a new addition, which typically is like from half, the halfway point of the house back. So just some.
So Katie, how would that happen? Because if it was historic, Leslie would have to write, there's a report again, right?
So that, that would be the challenge. They'd almost have to withdraw their determination of significance, because otherwise you are running into floodplain issues of remodel. But anyway, um, in, do you want a, a short recap of what staff has heard for?
Sure, that would be great, because I, I'm not sure what we heard, so.
Okay, so from, for the new curb cut and for, for the new curb cut, it seemed that there was more of a majority of to redesign it without a curb cut and uh onsite parking. But there may be a, a support for a variance to the offsite parking requirement, because it, within the village, it would be required to have an offsite parking. So um, the deck over the sidewalk, it seemed like it was, the feedback was to pull it, if you're gonna. if you're gonna have an upper story deck, pull it back and not make it so top-heavy. And, uh, variance to the ten percent open space, it seemed that, between the applicant stating that they could make that work and they won't need a variance to the ten percent open space requirement. And there was some, um, comments about possibly adding that towards the, towards the street so it can be enjoyed. Um, variance to onsite parking, again, it sounded like there was more support for a variance to the offsite parking, knowing that there's, um, and then the overall design, it sounded like it should be brought back to a more reasonable manner that's not too overwhelming, so on the sidewalk and, um, for the appearance along the street. And looking at the buildings next to it.
Yeah, and I would think there was consensus, it was more of a concern about the flat roof or the bulkiness, maybe give it some architecture roof line or something.
Well, it would, the architecture will change if we're going this route.
Right.
Yeah, this was more to fit in the box, that's all.
Anything else we missed that you wanna tell staff? Alright, well, thank you, Dennis, and, um, we don't really take any action here. You kinda cut our perspective and nowhere to go, so.
No, we still have a project here, and I appreciate that, and, uh, we'll be back to you, thank you.
Thank you, good luck. Okay, um, that moves us on to item B, seven eighteen Capitola Avenue, which is a design permit for a hundred and twenty square foot accessory structure at the rear of existing commercial structure. And this includes a variance for the required side yard setback located in the automatic review overlay of the commercial neighborhood zone.
Thank you, Chairman Welch. So, you're correct, this is applications for design permit for a hundred and twenty square foot accessory structure?
What?
Just wait, you can just wait till I'm done with staff report and then.
It'll be a few minutes, we'll get to you.
That's good. Um, let me go back. Design permit for a hundred and twenty square foot accessory structure with a variance for the required side yard setback located in the automatic review overlay and the CN Neighborhood Commercial Zoning District. The proposed accessory structure is located at the rear of the existing commercial structure, uh, the taqueria, in the southwest corner of the lot at seven eighteen Capitola Avenue. This application is the result of code enforcement case, because the accessory structure was built without planning or building permits. The accessory structure was originally included, uh, originally included a bread oven as well, uh, which has since been removed. So this is the rear side of the existing accessory structure, uh, put the south lot line on the left-hand side there. Uh, this is the north side of the existing accessory structure, between one of the octagonal buildings and the backside of the taqueria. This is the west or front side of the existing accessory structure underneath the breezeway, between the main building and the accessory structure. The image shows the location of the two doors, um, to the accessory structure, as well as the separation between the accessory structure and the existing commercial structure. And this is just to show you the, the spacing on the south side between the, uh, existing accessory structure and the adjacent commercial building. So as, um, Sasha mentioned in the previous presentation, uh, ca- to do a project like this requires variance, and variance requires two findings, one of special circumstances applicable to the property, and one that it would not grant this, uh, special privilege to this property. Uh, there are no special circumstances applicable to this prod- property, but there are multiple other properties in the vicinity and under identical zoning classification uh, that do enjoy the privilege of having structures with non-conforming side yard setbacks, uh, which I'll show you on the next slide. Uh, and similarly, the grant of variance wouldn't constitute a grant of special privilege because none of the existing commercial structures in the vicinity meet the required setbacks. So here we have, uh, there are many structures in the vicinity and under the same zoning classification that are non-conforming, cause they don't meet the si- meet the side and or rear setbacks. Uh, the list includes seven sixteen, seven fifteen, seven twelve, and seven oh six Capitola Avenue, and seven hundred, five oh six, and five oh four Bay Avenue. Uh, it's also, as I mentioned, in the AR zone. Uh, the purpose of the AR zone is to fulfill the general plan in those special cases where no other zoning district could effectively accomplish the same task. However, the AR zone is not intended to grant, uh, development privileges above and beyond the guidelines of the general plan. Uh, and in order, just so you know, in order to establish these zones, uh, the planning commission must find that either the current zoning classification for the area is not best suited to fulfill the goals of the general plan, or that due to timing, parcel size, parcel shape, or topography, the proposed area is a special case, and therefore no other zoning district classification is appropriate. Uh, staff reviewed previous general plans and found no reference to why the property at seven twenty Capitola Avenue's was designated AR. However, uh, it may have been designated as an AR parcel due to the unique development on the lot, uh, with the three octagonal structures and one garage, each located within a corner of the lot, and the parking in the middle. Uh, all the bo- all the buildings are located within the required setback areas and are existing non-conforming. In addition, uh, Building official Robin Woodman inspected the property on October first, twenty eighteen, to determine what would be required at the building permit stage to rectify the unpermitted construction if the planning commission were to approve the accessory structure. Uh, the list includes exposing and inspecting the foundation, floor and wall framing, um, and electrical and wiring boxes, providing earth separation and weatherproofing for the building siding, installing one-hour fire-rated walls on the west and south sides of the building, where it's close to the adjacent properties, and removing the gas and water lines and the mechanical system on the roof. She also, also provided the applicant with that list of requirements on October second. Uh, if the planning commission approves application eighteen zero four eight seven, each of these items would be required to be resolved within a building permit. Uh, in addition, uh, during the approval of permit twelve dash one sixty in twenty thirteen, which was, uh, the design permit for an addition and an amendment to the conditional use permit to allow a full restaurant use here without door seating, Public Works Director Steve Jesper requested that the existing driveway approach along Capitol Avenue be required to be replaced with a standard curb. Uh, this request was, for some reason, not included as a condition on permit twelve one sixty, so Public Works would like to see this requirement, uh, for a standard curb as a condition of this permit. Uh, it's, I mean, it has been included in condition fifteen of the proposed conditions of approval, which, uh, because we were recommending denial, those, uh, conditions and findings are an attachment to your staff report. Uh, the Public Works Department also requested that the building plans show the locations of gutters and downspouts and where those downspouts drain, uh, because there are not currently gutters or downspouts on the existing commercial structure or the unpermitted accessory structure. Uh, this, that requirement was included as condition ten. Uh, in addition, staff also confirmed with, um, Santa Cruz County Environmental Health Department, Representative Olga Zuniga, that the restaurant needs dedicated dry storage space to meet health code requirements. And without this accessory structure, the restaurant does not meet those requirements. So with that, uh, staff recommends the planning commission review the application and deny project application eighteen zero four eight seven as outlined in the findings for denial. However, staff recognizes that the project is located in the AR overlay zone that provides, uh, a little bit of, uh, flexibility in the review. So should the planning commission choose to approve the project, uh, we did put those draft conditions of approval and findings in your staff report.
Very good, thanks, Matt. Any questions of staff?
And what, are you suggesting then that the CN zone be the applicable, uh, requirements for this AR area?
Yes.
Okay. You know, I could be wrong, but I think that was zoned AR before any of those structures, the decagon-type structures were out there, I think.
Yeah, I don't know.
But I'm not a hundred percent certain.
There was no record of the permits, so.
Yeah, you know, the AR thing took place again in the eighties,
and specific parcels were picked out for that AR zone for whatever unique characters they had, characteristics,
but I can't recall why that one was zeroed in on.
So, so I guess I have a question about the, the curb cut, since we're on curb cuts this evening. So Steve suggested that, that you, you, you convert that curb to a standard curb, eh, which would, I guess, would eliminate the notion of redevelopment, that turning into an apartment complex or something with a wide driveway, I would imagine that's what it used to be, some sort of a living arrangement, um.
It was three parking spaces that were there, so it was parking for the, uh, I believe it was an office, a real estate office, maybe, in that location, so it used to be two or three parking spaces for that building, which was then converted to the patio as part of that permit. And so, usually when things like that take place, they, they require the removal and replacement of the, uh, driveway approach and put standard curb in there, so that's, that's why he had recommended that.
Okay, and, uh, but if it was then to be torn down and rebuilt into some sort of residential thing that needed a curb, would we have a problem with curb cuts, like we do in the village? Not as big a deal, okay.
Okay, any other questions for staff? Uh, then, Mr. Majores, somebody come, wanna come?
Hello, everybody. Well, I thought I was gonna be done with this a long time ago, but I guess not, um, obviously, lack of experience. Uh, in the beginning, because of the health department, I needed to have a space for storage. And the, the guy at the time from planning, uh, Ryan, that was helping me, he reassured me that I was able to, to build the storage in there. And, and basically, uh, I did it, I did it at the same time that the rest of the construction, uh, I was allowed to, I guess, for an extra five feet by twenty feet for the AD eight bathroom and, and the sink room. And so, I just, I just never thought that I was gonna get in trouble, I... But anyway, so I guess, uh, what I'd like to say that I, that I have to ag- agree with the conditions, and I like to make it right. I just would like for everybody to kinda be easy on me, this has been, I started with this project on August first, two thousand and ten, and knowing what I know now, I probably never would've done it, but it's too late. I have a lot of money, a lot of time, and a lot of work. So, I just like to go forward and just make it right and do whatever. This storage actually was built five, six years ago, at the same time as the rest of the extension. Um, I have pictures, I got records, I got proof of all these. In fact, uh, it was marked on the building inspection, and it was, uh, Brian and Nelson, they actually came over and green me the, gave me the green light with this storage building was already in existence. And I just, I, I just, I never thought I was gonna, I was doing something wrong. Obviously, I've been here three times, this is my fourth time. Why would I make everything legal with, with permission and not do that? I mean, that just don't make no sense to me. I wanted to do it right, it's just that he was working with me, and I just assumed that he was taking care of everything. Um, this is the first time I, I ever done this, so I don't have a lot of experience. Uh, the fact that I have to install, uh, a, a pizza oven in there, I did it by a licensed company. It was done right. Uh, I, I actually hired three different companies to make sure that it was drin- it was done right. And, and so, but, but anyway, so, eh, but at this point in time, I just like to just do it right and finish it, and just get on with my business.
Okay, Mr. Major, any questions for the applicant? No? Okay, thank you very much, you can sit down now, and we'll discuss it. Any, anybody else in the public like to talk?
I'm Manny's neighbor, two doors down, my office is there, and great taqueria, great taqueria. He's a real asset to that neighborhood, all the, all the local businesses and the people in the neighborhood walk there, and has a nice outside feel to it, and, uh, we all want him to survive. You know, he, he's, he's an asset to our, to our community there, and, uh, um, if any of you have been in the restaurant business, I don't wish that on anybody. It's a, it's a very, very difficult, I think Manny probably agrees with me that, with that, it's, it's a very tough business. And so, um, if he, if he adheres to building codes, brings the code, and also environmental health department, cause it seems like, I think that you guys should approve this project, thank you.
Thanks, Dennis. Okay, if no one else, uh, for the public wants to speak, we'll bring it back to the commission and for discussion and see what you like to do.
I'm just curious, why the recommendation for denial?
Um, because the strict, um, interpretation of the code for a variance, we couldn't find some, um, findings of special circumstance.
And the applicant talked about that, you know, he worked with Brian and went through inspections and stuff, do we have records of that, is that?
So, that, that is correct, we are, there, there is definitely, um, a portion of this that should've been caught during the building inspections. The oven was, was caught, and that was eventually brought into compliance, but the change in the square footage for that area, um, was not caught at the time of building.
Okay, very good. A pardon? Okay, well, go ahead, jump in there.
Cause, uh, I'm usually extremely tough on variances.
Yes.
Um, and I especially don't like applications that come in through code enforcement.
Right.
Sort of like build it and then beg for forgiveness later, but in this case, uh, I think I can support this application. And we don't really have a complete, uh, site plan of the parcel here, but the special circumstance I'm seeing is that the, uh, western property line is, um, it's not at a ninety-degree angle, and that's what's really causing the side yard setback issue uh, for the new storage. And, um, I think that would, I think that the shape of the parcel is really the, uh, the reason that he was not able to get this in with the proper side yard setback.
Well, and the existing restaurant is a legal non-conforming though, right? Yeah, so, okay, anybody else?
Yeah, I, I'm concerned, what happens to your restaurant without the storage area?
Uh, I mean, I, I, I we- I guess, um, on the worst case, I would probably have to have some kind of a trailer bed, oh my god.
Yeah, okay, you've answered my question.
Yeah. And, and, and that might be okay with you guys, but might not be okay with the health department, it's like, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Yeah, we understand.
Yeah, well, you know, we've heard tonight about the vacancies in the village, and, you know, you could drive through it, there's a number of places down there that are vacant, and I've never seen it this bad, and our economy's booming, so I'm not quite sure what the problem is. But I could probably support this, just to age your business to continue.
Thank you.
Peter, could you?
Well, so when we say, uh, support it, that, that means, uh, bring it up to code, and then, but not change the envelope, basically just fix it.
Yeah, based on all the conditions they've, that the staff has listed.
I support that.
Yeah, there's, uh, there's a couple things from the, uh, building, uh, uh, inspection where, uh, I gotta, like I say, I'm, I'm okay to do whatever they re- request me to do, and, um...
We've got the list right here, so if you're okay with it, we'll discuss it and take a vote, and we'll, we'll see where it goes.
Yeah. Will this be the right time for me to ask for, um, uh, the limited parking time on the street? Like, you know, the green line that they paint on there?
Oh, yeah, no, that, the, no, you can work with staff to, to look at how we do that. It'd go, it would go through a little different process, so.
Okay, so then...
Just give us, we, we haven't voted yet, you're not there yet. You're welcome to leave, but you'll go unknowing what we're gonna do, so. So Courtney, do you have it?
I just have my, I closed my taqueria at eight, and I'm just thinking about the girls waiting for me.
Well, we'll try to, if you, if you stop, we'll get on with our business, and then we'll... Okay, Courtney, you, you have anything you wanna add?
I think if the neighbors are good with it, I think it's a good thing.
Okay, then I just, I guess I'll bring it to the floor for a motion.
I'd move approval for the, uh, storage areas and, uh, conditions that they be brought to code.
I'll second that.
So we have a first, second, all those in favor?
Well, wait, that's the condition, all, all the conditions that are in the staff report.
Yeah, okay, so no discussion, we're done with the, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You're good to go, so you can work with our staff to make sure you, uh, get the proper sign-offs this time.
Alright.
Thank you, Manny.
Alright, free tacos.
We didn't hear that, we just had our meeting tonight.
Our first round of laundry, yeah.
Okay, so that, that brings us to, uh, item C of the update of the general plan and land use, Matt.
Okay, I'm glad we had our training earlier this evening.
For those of you who miss it, no free tacos.
So, this evening, I'm returning to you, um, with the general plan cleanup. Uh, this came before the planning commission and dis- Uh, this came before the planning commission in December, with three new members on the panel, I'm gonna go through the, the highlights. If you have any questions on the specific properties and any modifications to the map, I have slides on those, I'm not going to bring those up, but I can, I'm prepared to answer any of your individual questions on the maps. So, the, the first big change is to, or they're all pretty minor changes, but to revise the table LU one and figure LU three to update it, so that the Rispin Mansion Park is shown on there, and to show McGregor Park is completed, and also to, um, add the planned Rispin Park site. Um, another cleanup item was within our multifamily residential density, the general plan only established tw- twenty dwelling units per acre. Our zoning code has a range between ten dwelling units per acre up to twenty. When we reviewed the, um, density bonus, um, application on Claire Street, it became apparent that when a density bonus application comes in, the developer can take advantage of either the zoning ordinance or the general plan, whichever is, um, allows more density. And so by our general plan just stating the twenty, we wanted to clean that up and specify, um, the ten, fifteen, and twenty dwelling units per acre, so that that loophole is closed for future density bonus applications. Um, next is visitor accommodations, so within, uh, when we updated the zoning map, we got rid of the underlying zone of visitor serving, and this would get rid of the, uh, land use designation of visitor accommodations, and it would align with the new zoning code in which we have a visitor server overlay now, with a new base, de- base zone for each parcel, and this would have a visitor, um, accommodation overlay as well, so just bringing both maps into sync. Next is for the Village Hotel, bu- prior, we didn't reference this as the former Capitola Theater Site. During our last meeting in December, there was a request to also add the APNs, there's actually multiple APNs to the site, so I will do that if, um, so directed tonight, um, add the APNs to this as well. But just to bring clarity that it was not the other hotels within the Village, that this, um, incentive is only for the Capitola Theater Site. Next is the zoning code, th- within the, um, the FAR allowances for, to go beyond the incentives, that that area includes all of the mall, and so this, we cleaned this up when we rewrote, when we did the zoning ordinance, we really specified where that area is, and we mapped it, so this is just cleaning up the language to also, um, clarify where that boundary is in, in order to utilize the incentives and the new zoning ordinance. Um, so one question that came out of the, the last hearing was how, um, sorry, so the, during the last hearing, there was a question of the, the proposed change, there's a proposed edit to clarify there, within, um, residential, there's a max density under our general plan of, that's established, and it ranges between ten to twenty units per acre. There, for commercial, there's a max floor area ratio that's established, and that is, w- along with the development standards, it really creates what's called the building envelope for a development on a site. And the question came up, we've had calls within our commercial areas where now we, we allow, uh, mixed-use development, what is the density for mixed-use development, or, you know, or future if Kings Plaza got redeveloped as mixed-use, or the mall, what's the maximum density? And, and looking back in our past general plans and zoning ordinances, we've never established a density within the community commercial zoning district or the mixed-use zoning district, and we created in our last zoning update the new, uh, regional commercial district, it was part of the CC. Um, so, the, the question of how, how are we going to calculate that in the future? Uh, the initial reaction was we, well, we haven't regulated it in the past, so it would be the outcome of floor area ratio and the development standards. But in looking at our new zoning code that we recently updated, we actually, we did establish a minimum of twenty units per acre within our commercial, so within the CC and the, the community commercial and the regional commercial. So, um, that would require that within those areas, you, they'd be looking at floor area ratio and development standards of that building envelope, but within that envelope, you couldn't go beyond the twenty units per acre. Um, so, the methodology of what's there works, if we want to establish a density, we can just clarify in the general plan that, um, density, residential density and commercial areas is a maximum of twenty units per acre, or we can, uh, remove that reference, and it'll just be, it'll fall back to the way it's always been, a floor area ratio and development standards. Um, and then the question came in from the planning commission of, well, how does it impact if we remove the density of twenty units per acre, how does that impact us if, if we were to get a, um, a density bonus application? So with the density bonus application under state law, the developer has to give something in order to get the density bonus. So typically, it's affordable housing projects, and depending on the level of affordability, the more affordable they make it, and that's the sale price or the rental price, the more units they get. And within the density bonus regulations, you can get up to a thirty-five percent density bonus. Um, and, and under that scenario, but you'd be providing quite a few, uh, I think it's thirty-five percent of the project would be affordable to very low-income residents. So, how would this work if we remove the density? Um, first, I'll go through how it works if you keep the density, so at twenty units per acre, you could get, a developer, if they give a benefit, can get up to twenty-seven units per acre. If, in the commercial area, we did not have a density limit, um, a developer would be able to take that building envelope and put twenty units per acre in there, put thirty units per acre in there, as long as it's within the height and the setbacks and the parking standard. So, in looking at this, and I've leaned on a few, um, people that have worked with the density bonus law frequently, and an attorney that works with it frequently, um, and they said, most likely, you'll never see an application for a density bonus if you don't have an established density, because they have to show a cost savings if they're going to ask for more density, and there's a real hard argument to be made if, if it's endless density. So, by removing the density, what happens is you can get a lot more smaller units, essentially. Um, the other-
Can I get a clarification, because we talked about, about this, and I thought the net-net was with or without the twenty units density description, um, it, it was a, it was a zero sum in terms of the, the increased number of units. In other words, if you wanted, if you are a pro-development person, you wanted an increased density and more affordable housing, it wouldn't matter, it, it wouldn't affect this decision, in other words, if, if I was to say, okay, I want a, a lot of affordable housing, therefore, I'm gonna put in the twenty units, or leave the twenty units per acre in there, so that I can get the twenty-seven, as opposed to leaving it out, in which case you said they could maybe get thirty.
Right.
So, so is that, so is the, so-
The twenty is more restrictive.
So in fact, it's not a zero sum, it's, it's, with that, with removing it, we could, conceivably, someone could come in and say, I want a, a lot of affordable housing, la- high-density, thirty units, and we wouldn't have that restriction.
So, if somebody were to come in under, um, the, if we had twenty units per acre, there's, they would have to provide affordable housing in order to get up to the twenty-seven units per acre.
Right, right, so we needed that.
But a, a, a commercial developer could come in and say, I'm gonna build thirty market-rate units, and they're not affordable, they're market rate. Um, at that point, one out of every seven units has to be de-restricted per the city's standards, but you're not gonna get as many affordable units out of a project as you would out of a density bonus project.
But you could have more density, regardless of whether they're-
You could have more density, and the higher the density goes, the more affordable units you'll get, because one for every seven units has to be de-restricted in the city of Capitola.
Thank you.
Okay, so the other reason that I think this is highly unlikely on some of our larger parcels in the incentivized area of Capitola, is that within the CC zone and the CR zone, this is around the mall and the forty-first intersection with Capitola Road, there's incentives for community benefits, which include, um, you know, improving s- sidewalks and providing public art and creating jobs, and there, there's a lot that can be, it's not just tied to affordable housing, and those incentives increase the floor area, um, in the CC zone from one to two, and in the CR zone from one point five to two, so it's quite a hu- a large incentive, and it gives them a lot more flexibility in what they wanna bring to the table in terms of the gives to the community in order to get these higher numbers. So, I, it, for those areas just along forty-first, I don't see it as a, as an issue, but I, I think it's hi- it's highly unlikely that we would see a density bonus application if we remove the density.
Is this change intended to encourage, uh, affordable housing, is that the idea?
You know, it's just to be consistent with the way the general plan has been. Um, it, it was really to clean up the question when we get the phone calls of how do you calculate?
Cause I, I, I think the, uh, floor area ratio is a better, uh, metric for this kind of an area, and the problem I have is that you could have one condominium with four bedrooms, or two condominiums with two bedrooms each, and, I mean, what's the difference? It, that's why I'd rather look at it from the standpoint of the, uh, floor area ratio than units, units aren't a good metric.
Well, it seems to me, we have a little more control than the state pushing that density, uh, bonus on us as well, so, I would agree.
Which one works best to facilitate the mall redevelopment?
So, I would say, so, it, to, to facilitate redevelopment, I would say removing the density does, but honestly, if I were, um, a developer, it may, it may give them more security in their, if they see it, that there's twenty units per acre, and that's what they can develop up to, it's more of a defined number than no number at all, you know, so, i- it's hard, but to facilitate and have the most, um, flexibility in a development, it would really be to remove that standard of twenty.
Something, that's, that's one unit for every two thousand square feet roughly.
Mm-hmm, exactly.
And I'm just wondering, i- is that a feasible restriction to allow them to develop the mall to include housing and become financially feasible to do that? Or do they need a higher density? You know, one time, we had RM one thousand, which was, which was one unit for every one thousand square feet.
Yeah, um, I have sent staff reports, and li- I've, I've sent, I've let, um, the mall developer with the recent acquisition, let them know that we were looking at this, and they haven't said that either way is a problem, so.
Okay, is that, is that it?
That's it, so basically, it was an e- either-or, um, decision this evening.
Right.
So with that, our recommendation is that the planning commission discuss the general plan amendments and, uh, provide direction and a positive recommendation to the city council.
City council, so any questions about?
I do have a question.
There's a lot of catch-up here for those of you new on the-
Yeah, so, the, the one about the, the far ho- floor area ratio for just the Capitola ho- uh, theater site, could you, maybe some of you guys have been here a while, tell me why that's just that site? Why, why couldn't someone build a hotel in the Mercantile and have that same floor area ratio relaxation? Why are we, why is it specific to that site?
I don't, I don't know if I, I don't really have, maybe Katie has, I don't know, I think initially, we weren't gonna discuss the theater site, we kinda left it as its own thing, and then we got caught up in the, do you remember how it came to that? There's other restrictions ab- about that site, I think, is the height and stuff that kind of bound the-
I, I believe it was, um, the outcome of a very long process with the general plan update, and-
General plan focused quite a bit on the theater site, we actually had, uh, spent a whole day doing a mock design and so forth. So the, that site has been treated, uh, as a, uh, special-
Standalone.
Site, and, but, I mean, you make a good point, there may be other sites somewhere, someday, that- Yeah, so why go through the trouble of specifying this theater site only and just leave it the way it is, cross that bridge when we come to it?
So I will say that I, I think the intent during the general plan write, the writing of the general plan, was, I think the focus was on that theater site, so this would be reflecting all the, the, the meetings that occurred and the conversations that happened. But, um, if you think it should be broadened, then that would be an amendment to the general plan, and something that can be discussed if it should be applied to other sites other than-
Like a special privilege to one particular plot of land. Well, it's good to get fresh, uh, eyes on this, because you see, you know, someone, it's sort of like, you know, oh, yeah, good point. You know, we get so focused on that site, we did, at least in a long time.
I, I think it's because, Peter, I think it's because it's really the vacant lot, and you're right, the Mercan, in fact, the Mercantile has come to us-
Yeah, recently.
And with, uh, some concepts, so, um, I think it's just because it was vacant, and there's a lot of discussion about what's gonna hap, a lot of concern from the community, what was gonna happen there.
Realistically, it probably is unique in that, uh, there isn't anything that comes close to that, uh, potential for development. They were talking like fifty units, uh, a lo- pretty large project there, I don't know where else we could really do that in the Village.
Yeah.
Anyway, I don't like the APNs very much for as a, I don't know where that came from, but APNs aren't really a good way to designate properties in a document like a general plan or a zoning code, because they change. So, well, let, let me, I'm gonna clarify what, what you're asking in, in this, and that is, uh, currently, it's not specific, the, with the verbiage is not specific to that site, and you wanna say, oh, I understand that city count, or rather, the planning commission wanted to be specific to that site, so let's add those added words to that, and I'm suggesting, well, I don't add them, I mean-
Yeah, well, the, it, the wor- the capital of, uh, the hotel is in there, I gue- yeah, I guess they're trying to make it more specific, so, I mean, that's our, the, our, our role here is to make a recommendation, to accept it, give a direction, go to the city council, so, you know, that's, that's our choice here, is to decide whether we wanna include it or not include it, and what is the-
Well, I think, uh, although I think Peter makes some good points, I think we shouldn't at this point rock that boat and, uh, really kinda read-
But you want to not include the APNs, just have it named the Co- Capitol Theater Site?
Yeah, that's a minor thing, it, uh, I, 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 I don't know where that came from, but I don't think that, I think we just call it the Capitol Theater Site, and-
We all know what that is.
Well, but rocking the boat would be to add those words in there. They're currently not there, so you're, you're trying, you're creating a special, special case, just leave them not there, that's not rocking the boat, that's leaving the way it is. Well, I think what they're trying to do is conform to what had really been the intent.
That was intent of the general plan, is what, they're trying to tie back, clean up that general plan idea, and that's what the meetings were about, so.
You know, I've always felt the, the FAR was an end run around all the zoning requirements that we've established.
For the hotel?
For everything, for any place it applies.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, agree with the general plan cleanup, with the exception of this particular item.
I'll second that.
So, it's not necessarily a motion, right, we're just, you're just looking for a direction, we're gonna, what, the motion is gonna be to accept your, your presentation with the direction of, Peter, have we have a first and a second, I guess, agreement to move towards not including the wording and-
Not add that wording?
Yeah, it'd be a, yeah, so a positive recommendation, but to not include that wording.
Yeah.
What about that other, the one other issue that we talked about?
Yeah, I'll need some-
Was the density, yeah.
I'd rather keep mixed use, uh, without any specific, uh, y- unit density.
I'm, I'm totally on board with that myself, so.
Yeah, that's what they have in there, I agree with that.
Is that good enough?
Yep, so remove the-
So I'll make a motion that, uh, well, if we have a motion, well, I guess you'd have to amend your motion to accept the report with the direction of not having the density component and not adding this other wording, is that right?
Well, the report doesn't have the density in it, so that's accepting the report, this is the only exception we'd take to the report.
Okay, are you, are we clear on that?
Is it, do we all agree on that, or is, it was a motion and a second, but I don't know if everybody's on the same page? Well, I'm almost unsure on how they were presenting that issue.
Okay, so I'm clear that, that the, um, recu- it would be a positive recommendation to accept, not, not to accept this change, that's the red line shown in the slide, so not to- This, the red line's shown in the slide, so not to add the words at the former Capitola Theater site. And in terms of density, that will clarify as the, as is redlined, that density, um, in a mixed-use or a commercial setting will be, uh, um, regulated through FAR rather than the dwelling units per acre. And I will be coming back with a zoning code amendment for that, so.
Okay, is everyone good with that?
I'd like to strike the whole thing.
Start over, let's do another general plan.
So we saw, we have, we have a motion, so we, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Good. And I, so now we're down to, uh, director's report.
Okay, I have just one item, well, I guess two items. I haven't seen you all since December and the big update is that Merlongeyer bought the mall, or bought the Sears site, so that was withdrawn. The appeal was officially withdrawn at the last meeting. And so I'll be keeping you in the loop. I've invited them to attend a planning commission in the near future. I want them to provide you with an update. So we're looking at scheduling that now, so that we'll know, get a better idea.
We have some role in, uh, making that happen by, you think, the way their application was handled.
By Se- with Sears, with, with Mo- with, uh, Sarah Taj?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I believe that they have been hoping that this would occur for quite some time. They've been pursuing that. And it's more of what was going on between them talking with the New York office versus what was happening in our area, so a big disconnect. Um, so hopefully, they'll be coming to you soon. And then the other thing is we've got a special meeting in two weeks for the, um, changes to the coastal, or to our zoning for the updated LCP. Um, I did ask the coastal commission if they had a couple staff members that would be willing to attend so that they could explain some of their changes that they're requesting, and they've accepted. And I, I wanted to check in with our planning commission, um, if, if that seems like a good route to, to have them here so they can go over any questions you may have. Um, and I'm seeing kind of nodding of heads, so I think that sounds good.
They, uh, having the coastal commission?
Having the coastal commission present for that meeting.
We need a sergeant of arms.
Our chairman wants to, um, read him out.
I'll be, I'll be, Courtney.
Okay, okay, so, and.
I'm not a fan, we all know that.
And by Wednesday of next week, you'll have new, and for some of you, your first binder of the zoning code changes. So, there'll be red lines of all the coastal commission's changes, and the first page will be a key. That will s- I'll highlight the ones that I think are, should be adopted and aren't controversial. And I'll ki- I'll have a key that kinda highlights which items I think we need a lot of discussion on and. So I'll be bringing that forward. At this point, I do not have, um, the geological hazards sections redlined from the coastal commission and they provided me one copy of nonconforming, and they were pretty drastic in the impact to the Capitola residents would be very severe in terms of what they were proposing. And once I, um, brought that up at one of our meetings of like how, just how impactful this would be to the residents, they said at this time, we'd suggest we move forward with the zoning code as it is without going into the nonconforming at this point. So, that, um, if, if the planning commission would prefer that that document, if we c- continue to work on things with them when they're here and say, no, we wanna get geological hazards figured out at this juncture and nonconforming and not submit to the coastal commission until we have the whole document updated, I think it will, it'll, it'll make it a longer process in front of the coastal commission rather than having ninety percent of the document adopted and holding back off, uh, holding back on two chapters. But as you're reviewing, just keep that in mind, cause I'm gonna be looking for feedback, um, on how you think I should proceed with this. If it should be a one package and we keep working out the details, or get the ninety percent done and let's deal with geological hazards and nonconforming later, cause they will have bigger impacts. So with that, that concludes my director's report.
And, and if I could, what, what about the orchard supply? I haven't been, is there something new on the?
No updates at this point on orchard supply.
I keep seeing speculation about home goods.
Well, they were an advocate for the Sears building, so I could see how that could happen.
That would be a nice.
Pet smart.
Yeah, either one of them, right? They just to be, have concern about their signs. Um, any other questions for staff and, uh, commission communications? Well, welcome, welcome back, Mick and Courtney and Peter, it's nice having you here. And, uh, so with that, I guess we will adjourn to February twenty-first. Is that the correct date? Uh, it's seven PM on February twenty-first? Thank you very much.
That's correct. Six PM.
Uh, I'm sorry, what's that?
At six PM.
At six PM.
The special meeting will start early.
Okay, six PM on February twenty-first.
Get some reminder then?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.